...hear you, hear you, hear you. Howard County Board of Commissioners are now in session.
Please have a pledge and prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all please stay standing for prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask for your help and your guidance in each and every day, but especially when we're here to do the business in the county and do the business for the taxpayers. We just ask that you watch over us, lead us, and guide us, and that we be open to your leading. We say a special prayer this week for the city council and everything that's going on with them. And please just help them and guide them and help our community right now. As people seem to don't like decisions that are made. We just ask that they can live with those decisions and understand and know that change may not be such a bad thing. So we also ask for the county council, Lord, that you be with them as they're about to head into budget time and that you would lead them and guide them with all the requests that they have and know that they can and will do the right things for Howard County. And it's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen.
All right. Special announcements and recognitions. We have one. We have a pillar of candy award for Council Jim Pappasack. Somebody come on down.
We just come to you.
Yeah, we'll come out here. Congratulations, this is grateful. Appreciate you for your long and dedicated service assistance in Howard County. Go ahead, committee of officers, over the Howard County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If I, I'd like to say something as a former department head. I wanted to say this, that several years ago, as Director Kinsey, I came to the council and asked for specific raises. And I felt like the Kinsey employees were maybe some of the most underpaid employees at that time in the county. And that the raises didn't go through. And Mr. Pappasack almost immediately, like two days later, called me and said, hey, we're gonna fix this eventually. And just trust me, trust me that it will happen. And I think the following June, I was sitting in my office and I get a phone call and said, Mr. Pappasack's here to see you. And I thought, what's he want? He came back and he sat and he stayed for two or three hours. And we worked through and that September, they passed what we were asking for with additional. So not only did he come through, but he's definitely a man of his word, a man of integrity.
Thank you. And then was there something else you guys were gonna read? Where, do we know where it is? Do we know where it is? Ah.
Oh, we got, oh, we do have it. Okay. Now, I'm gonna give this to the boss here. I got the inbox for you to see.
Yes, I'm gonna have you read this. A lot of people don't know that. Jim Pappasack was awarded the Sagamore of the Law Bash a few weeks ago. So I'm gonna have Jeff read that. That's what everybody knows what it says. At the top.
The State of Indiana Sagamore Council of the Law Bash. Eric J. Holken, Governor of the State of Indiana, Know all man by deeds presents whereas the greatness of the sons of Indiana derives in part from qualities possessed by the noble keepings of the Indian tribes that once roamed its domain. And whereas has been memorial custom of the State of Indiana to attract, to support those who have exhibited such qualities. And whereas there has endeared himself to the citizens of Indiana on James Jim Pappasack, distinguished by his humanity in living, his loyalty in friendship, his wisdom in counsel, his inspiration and leadership. Now therefore recognizing his greatness and desire to avail myself of his counsel, I do hereby appoint him keep to upon my staff rank, title Sagamore of the Law.
Jim was a city council person for a number of years.
Two terms.
Two terms. And then he went to come over to the county council for a total of 47.
Seven years.
Forty-seven years of public service. So Jim, all these accolades are well deserved and many more, excuse sir. But we so appreciate you and all your wisdom that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been my honor.
We appreciate everything you've done since the time. Very more, you think you'd like to say, sir?
Well, I've been honored to have the opportunity. I mean, I had the pleasure of spending 11 of the tail under your 47 years with you. And a number of those, both on the planning commission for the county as well as commissioners representative, obviously council, and then through the coordinating council. And so as commissioner, I appreciated the same type of diligence that Jeff just mentioned as well. Making the tough decisions, but always keeping an open mind and being able to work with the departments. Made our jobs as commissioners a lot easier and obviously helped the county run. So the Sagamore, very well deserved. Pillar of the community, very well deserved. And so on behalf of the grateful now city within Howard County, we thank you for your years of service and wish you all the best. Great job.
Yeah, council president, Gerald.
I can just recognize one thing about Jim Pappasack. All those years on the council, I don't know how a man can give any more than what you've given him, Jim. And just a life of service and being a pillar of the community is entirely appropriate that you receive this as acknowledgement. That's just what you've done, two score and seven years. And it ought to be noted that Jim didn't speak much during the meetings. He's a humble, humble servant, never claiming credit for himself. But when he spoke, it often directed the course of the conversation and the action that was taken from your words. So, hey, I salute you, I thank you, I wish you the very, very best. And you've given us all a beacon to follow.
Thank you, God.
Thank you.
And you're quite welcome to stay for our exciting business that we have.
Or you're free to leave if you'd like to. I'm gonna make you stay. All right, moving on, I don't know how we follow that, but entertainment motion approved in minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion second.
Motion second approved in minutes. All favors say aye.
Aye.
opposed, they are approved. Circulate those for signature. All right, moving on. Policy, departmental business reports. Looks like Information Systems Jeremy Stevens is up first. Boy's gonna be fancy on us now.
All right, I'm here to have the commissioners pick three photos for the website photo contest. As you know, we're unveiling a new website in a month or so. And for some of the pictures that will be featured on the website, we decided to host a contest where members of the community can send pictures of Howard County in and be recognized on the website and have the opportunity to showcase their work. We had over 100 submissions, so I'm very grateful for that. A lot of good pictures. These are the six finalists of the photos. And so I'd thought it'd be a fun idea if each one of the commissioners come up there. There's a pin right there on the side of the board. You just, one each, you just circle, circle which one you would like to have to win. So five, you step on up here right here. Just circle. So there should be, yeah, three winners. Three winners. One. You circle one, you circled one. All right.
Good choices, good choices.
Is that your final, final selection there? All right, so you've chosen. The, the corn photo is by Sarah Bates. The bridge photo in the lower right, that's by a gentleman named David Lovegrove. And the photo in the bottom left is from Danielle Saylor. So I will go ahead and inform them that they have been selected. And I'll go ahead and get them uploaded to the new website platform.
Good job.
Thanks, Sherman. Good job.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can do this again next year and keep the website content fresh and have an opportunity for the citizens to showcase their work.
Very nice photos.
Yeah, they did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Sherman. All right. He didn't tell us we were gonna do that in a meeting. All righty, moving on, Health Department Kelly Carpenter.
Hello. All right, I gotta, let me hand these out to you real quick.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time to discuss the county employee flu request for this upcoming season. I think we've decided to back down our recommendation to 250 doses for this upcoming season. We gave 159 doses this last year. It was down quite a bit. As you can see on the gel, only two doses I had down for the gel, which was odd. And what had happened was with the staffing changes, with the nurse that left Andrea when she, you know, retired or whatever, she was very good at making sure employees got their shots. And now that there's other staffing in there, they, you know, didn't take care of getting the doses from us. And I did contact them to see if they wanted me to bring the shots there, give them or what have you. And I talked to Sheriff Asher and he told me for this past season, just to keep them at the office and they would come and receive them as they wanted to. So this next season, we're gonna try to push a little harder to get scheduled out there and do it ourselves. So we gave a total of 159, so I feel safe ordering 250 with the hopes of, you know, getting some more employees vaccinated this coming year. The cost is gonna stay the same as this last season, 1825 per dose. So that decreases the county's cost a little bit since we're requesting 10 less doses than last year. That's all I have.
What happens to the extra doses that's not used by county?
And what we've always done is those are donated. Like when we go to the rescue mission or different sites like that, then we donate those doses for that purpose.
You need a motion to? Need a motion to approve that, Ellen? Ellen, we need a motion to approve the purchase of those?
I, yes, we do.
I'll make the motion. Second to approve. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Maintenance Bill Stone Street. Busy guy.
First was the, something we've been kicking around for a while since February, actually, is the water heat system. It work released. What was there was kind of mid-grade stuff. It was tied into old stuff. It's in a closet, so it's really hard to get stuff done in there. The water softener takes out most of the rain. So we've kicked around some other ideas, direct replacement of what we have, Renai Instant Heat, kinda like what you mount on the wall. And then these lock and var boilers, which are what we have in all the buildings, but just much smaller versions. Plus new storage tanks. The pump is still fine, it's a fairly new pump. But we gotta redesign the way the water flows through there because we got a lot of pinholes in there and that's causing problems with the storage tanks that we have. So it just needs a remodel. We have, we're given at least 100 showers a day out there, though the water usage is pretty high compared to what it used to be when the Kokomo Academy was out there. We don't have a kitchen, which, which helps us out. And we don't have to have the capacity that is recommended because we don't have 100 showers and 50 sinks running all at once. It's spread out and broken out through the day. So we dropped the capacity and that helped us on price somewhat. Unfortunately, you gotta have redundancy, which means we need to have two boilers. So we looked at a lot of options and the best price and the best option that I would recommend would be what's being recommended by QPH for $59,035. It's very high price, but it's a 20-year fix. So, and it's gonna fit in that room nicely. We got a good water softener to protect all of this equipment. So I think this is the best option.
Now, this is the kind of on-demand.
Exactly. It's a boiler, it's just like the on-demand like you see in the residential. It's just a higher, much higher grade and it's designed for long-term.
I'm very familiar with what happened in my house, actually. It is very high quality.
Yes, it is.
Are you gas or electric, Bill? I didn't hear.
This gas, natural gas, yep.
They work nice.
He's this building, he's courthouse, government center. I want to put them into the jail and work release center, or excuse me, the Kinsey. Those boilers are getting a lot of age on them. And when we did put them in, the savings was astronomical compared to those non-condensing boilers that we have in the old buildings.
Bill, do you know where your power panel is or?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, we, I do have that money in my Coomcat. No, no, excuse me. 1138.27. 1138.47241.
That's $58,001.
Building, it's $59,035.
I'll go ahead and make motion that we approve the water heater system replacement for work release as described.
I'll second it. Motion second to approve is presented. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved.
Thank you very much. Second one is at the jail. We were doing some repairs out there, found out that the pump was bad. The pump was four grand. So we instantly went over the amount I might be able to spend without permission, but we had no choice. We had the system open, so we got a new pump and got it in there. The bill came, this is just material only, for, to $6,018.62. And I would like to pay for that from Coomcat Building Upgrades,
Was that quality again?
That was Irish. Irish is working on that one, I bet.
Didn't sound like you had much for choice.
Yeah, we didn't. It was open there, we didn't have any choice.
Move that we approve add under emergency repair and exceed $6,018.62.
Second. Motion second to approve. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank your hard work.
Thanks, Bill.
New business, I guess that would be Amber.
I have two items today. The first item is just something that I need to read into the record as receipt. So this would be the RFP that we submitted approximately a month ago for the next bridge that we are going to design, Bridge 46. We sent out that RFP, we got four responses from that. The first response is from BFNS. They said, thank you for the opportunity, but they are declining a submittal at this time. The second submittal is from American Structure Point. They also said, thank you for the opportunity and they are not submitting a proposal at this point. Our third submittal is from Lock Mueller Group and they did submit a proposal. All of their paperwork is in order and ready to go so they can be evaluated. And the fourth submittal is from USI. They have also submitted a proposal. All of their paperwork is in order and ready to go. So they have submitted a proposal as well. So of those four submittals, we do have enough to continue on the process. End dot requires at least three. We've gotten four responses. So the next step would be for us to rate and rank the two consultants and submit that paperwork to End Dot. The second thing I have is an LPA consultant contract for the Bridge 56 project that we are currently working on. This is for the right-of-way purchase agreement. End dot requires us to sign a second contract for right-of-way purchasing due to the fact that at the beginning, we don't know how many properties we're gonna have to purchase. And right now, we do know. We have four properties that we do need to purchase, some temporary and permanent right-of-way. One of those properties is owned by the county. So BLN did give us a break on the cost of that accrual because there's no negotiation, it's just flushing the paperwork through the system. So we do appreciate that from BLN, so that gave us a much better price. The other three properties, we do have some permanent and some temporary right-of-way that we do need to purchase. So the total cost of that contract is a maximum amount not to exceed $23,300 for the purchase of the right-of-way for the Bridge 56 project. And this is a standard End Dot contract that is, was issued to us by End Dot. So I would just need an approval and signature for that. He's looked at, these are standard End Dot contracts. We don't have any say in how they're written. So, and he's approved these contracts before.
Yes.
Yep.
Do you have the road coordinates on each of these bridges?
Yeah, so Bridge 56 is on County Road 300 East, just south of County Road 100, Sycamore. And then Bridge 46 is the one that is up in Cassville. It's on County Road 550 North.
Thank you.
I move to approve that contract metric seed $23,300.
Second. Motion second to approve. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved. Thanks, Amber. Thanks, Amber. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
I did. Oh, you got?
That's all I got.
All right. Moving into claims reports, seller claims.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved. Payroll expense.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved also. And moving on to operating claims.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. A motion is second to approve. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved also. Any claims to ratify?
Nope.
How about monthly reports?
I don't have any.
Grants too. Moving on, county attorney, Ellen.
I have an updated equal employment opportunity plan for the county. This is something that's needed for various grants. And the prosecutor's office now has a grant that's dependent upon us having this plan. This is a plan we've already got in place, but we just updated it with the names of the commissioners who sit on the board now.
You need a motion to approve this, Ellen?
Yes, please.
entertain a motion to approve.
I make the motion as, as read.
Motion second to approve. All favors say aye. Opposed, that's approved. Signature's here.
And then there's a certification form that just, just the president needs to sign. It certifies that we have that plan.
Okay. Do as of now. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Fisher issues, Fisher Dodd.
No, sir.
Fisher pest.
I think we've made some progress with Stevens property out on Hickory, on Hickory Lane. We seem to have a couple of people interested in remediating that project. And that's been, it's been a long time coming. Hopefully, Ellen will hear something soon. That's correct.
Been working on that for a while. Appreciate it.
It's, it's a process.
Yeah, we know. Anything else?
It'll be a cleanup too. It'll be a process to clean it up.
Moving on, public comment.
Matt?
Sure.
Name's Brad Simone, Eastern Howard County. Okay, so on June 19th, I'd made a comment about having my water tested at Criterion Labs. And just like Mr. Pappasack, I'm a man of integrity. I'm a man of, of, was that a word you said? Dang it, I forgot. Anyways, it doesn't matter. I have integrity and I'm honest. So when I said that, that day, that, that statement I made was true, that Criterion Labs could not test my water for PFAS or PFOX. Believe it or not, patience is a virtue. The next day, I got an email from Ann Imes. So I'm gonna read it to you. So she says that it's a very complicated subject when it comes to PFAS and PFOX. There's two tests, one's for 25 panels, one's for 40 panels. Well, if I'm gonna have my water tested, I want it the most accurate. So I'm gonna go for the 40. So that 40 component set will cost me $432 every time I do it. Plus a $75 handling fee. Plus the lead testing's $50, the E. coli test is another $20. So right there, we've got $577. Quick math in my head. If the EPA recommends I do that twice, I'm over $1,000 every year to test my water for contamination that I've asked you to put in the ordinance. To me, that would be injurious to my finances and all the people that live out that side of the county. I'm lost in here that way, one way. But anyways, and a lot of the people out there are elderly. They're on fixed incomes. I don't think they're gonna like having to spend 500 and some dollars or double that every year for the life of this project. So we're, I'm gonna ask you again, please amend the ordinance and test for contamination, not damage to our wells. Unless a damaged well, a contaminated well, I should say, is considered a damaged well. Because that, I'm not, Mr. Wilson here, so I'm not good with words and how they're used in law. But if, if a contaminated well is considered a damaged well, then okay. But the problem is, your ordinance only has it being tested prior to and right after the completion of the project. Well, this is a 30-year project. That's not fair to anybody that lives out there that you're gonna ask us to spend an extra $500. That's not fair to anybody that lives out there that you're gonna ask us to spend an extra $500. Mr. Wyman made a comment not too long ago. Are we the county that says it's okay for that side of the county to spend that kind of money to get their wells tested, but everybody else in the county, they don't have to do that? It's not right. So, I'm just saying that you need to fix our ordinance. It's not fair to the people that live out there. We're concerned about our livelihoods, our welfare, guys. This is serious stuff. And I don't think we're being taken seriously. I really don't. That's why I said I'm a man of my integrity. I'm a man of my word. If I'm wrong, I'll admit it. I'm not sure everybody in this room can do that, but I can, and I'll do it every time. But right now, I know I'm not wrong about anything else. I sent you guys an email about hail damage. Somebody touted that their stuff's hail resistant. Guys, that's not true. We know it's not true. Don't believe everything you're told. Some people like to blow smoke. I'm not that guy. So, that's all I wanna tell you. Please amend the ordinance. Take it under advisement. Just, it's not fair. I mean, you see, you can watch TV now. Every day, there's a commercial. PFAS, PFOS, AFF for firemen. Anybody that works at airports probably been exposed to it. I've been exposed to it. I ran the AFF tank on the ship. So, I mean, I know what it's like. So, we need to be serious, not listen to everything these guys are claiming. I went through their little booth out there as a joke. They had petunias in there for their pollinators. That's an annual plant. They're not gonna go out there and plant those every year. The butterflies they had in there are monarchs. I don't know if you know or not, I've raised monarchs. Monarchs love milkweed. They didn't have one bit of milkweed in there. Alls they did with that booth was they jeopardized, just jeopardized one generation of monarchs. Because right now, it's breeding season, and they're trying to lay eggs, and those guys just killed a whole generation. So, that's who we're dealing with. They don't care about the environment at all. Thank you. Have a great night.
Anybody else? Mr. Faulkner. I'm sorry, Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you. My name's Frank Faulkner. I serve on the county council. My remarks don't exactly pertain to Howard County, but they relate to potential jobs at Howard County. I wanted to make the people aware of a hearing that's been scheduled for next Tuesday evening at McConacqua High School. The hearing is on the environmental impact statement related to the KC-46. Grissom was considered, Grissom Air Reserve Base was considered a alternate location to the primary base, which is March Air Force Base out in California. The KC-46 is the replacement tanker for the KC-135, which is based at Grissom Air Reserve Base. Currently, this summer, they're located over in Fort Wayne because of the runway repair to the Grissom runway. But it would be important, in my opinion, for people to be aware of what the environmental impact statement says with regards to KC-46. And we can find that information through the Kokomo Public Library and look in on the website. If you look at KC-46 and 135 basing decision. Grissom is a, listed currently as an alternative. Probably many of us on the Grissom Community Council are disappointed with that decision. We think it should be the prime basing place. But there's an opportunity for the public to become more aware of the environmental impact statement, and that hearing is scheduled for next Tuesday evening, the 25th, at the, I think it's in the, I'm gonna say, I know it's at McConacqua, but I think it's in the cafeteria at McConacqua. So, I wanted to mention that as information useful for residents and people employed at the base in Howard County. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherman.
Anybody else? Hearing done. Entertained motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Motion second to adjourn. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Leader adjourned. Thank you.